Seven thirty P M. Pursuant to section thirteen of the Open Public Meeting Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the sunshine notice of the Princeton zoning board of adjustment. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on December ninth, two thousand twenty-two, and has been posted to the municipal website, W W W. Princeton and J dot gov slash meetings pursuant to the the extension of the ongoing state of emergency by executive order two ninety-two. In accordance with the Emergency Remote Public Meeting Protocol, the local public boards to conduct public meetings without a physical attendance by members of the public noticed that during this extension of the state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment will be held electronically via Zoom. Was transmitted in the Princeton Packet was transmitted to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the twenty-fourth day of April, two thousand twenty. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and on the Princeton website and are to be maintained throughout the year and by transmitting a copy of same to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, Comcast Media, and by placing a copy thereof with the with the Clerk of Princeton. Notices have been placed on all windowed doors of the municipal complex. Okay. So let me get to the agenda. So Claudia, can you please call the roll?
Ken.
Here.
Paulson.
Here.
Mister Davich. Mister Floyd.
Here.
Mister Schreiber.
Here.
Mister Tenenbaum. Mister Stein.
Here.
Donna.
Yes.
Chairman Cohen.
Here. Okay. This evening, the ninety Brooks Bend project will be rescheduled. And two first, two fifty Mercer Street will be held until January, the January twenty-fifth meeting.
No, not two fifty, Steve. It's Lincoln Court.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm reading it. Yeah, Lincoln Court will be held till the January fifteenth meeting, twenty-fifth meeting.
Play that. Okay.
All right, so we have sort of start, we have administrative matters here. We have resolutions. I believe this resolution was in your packet. Has everybody had an opportunity to review it? In regard to notice of special meetings and charges for subscribers for agenda mailings.
Yep.
How do we? How do we want to vote on this, Karen?
Um. Well, I guess you can take a roll call. Why not? Just.
Okay.
For.
Claudia.
Second, yeah.
Ken. Uh, yes. Paulson.
Yes.
Mister Floyd.
Yes.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Mister Stein.
Yes.
Donna.
Yes.
Chairman Cohen.
Yes. Okay, now we'll go to the applications. The first application this evening will be case number Z twenty-two dash two forty-eight, twenty-five Birch Avenue, block sixty-nine oh-two, lot fourteen in the R nine zone, the Witherspoon Jackson Historic District. Derek, can you please read your memo?
Eric, before you begin.
Wait, I'm sorry. That's.
Yeah, I'll just note that the noticing is in is in order and the board has jurisdiction tonight. And I'd like to swear in Derek as well as Elizabeth Kim because they'll both be testifying. You both swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
I do.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, all right. Derek, can you go through your memo, please?
Yes, sir. Andrew Nauman is the applicant and owner of twenty-five Birch Avenue. He's seeking a C one variance in historic preservation plan approval to request and allow the construction of a second floor master bedroom addition and a deck and accepting the required smaller and combined side yard setbacks. Subject properties located in the R nine zone in the former Princeton Township. It's a lot is not complying with respect to required sixty-five hundred square foot lot area. The existing is twenty-two. Hundred and fifteen square feet. The lot width is noncompliant to the requirement. Same as frontage is both forty and the existing is twenty-two point one five feet. The subject property itself is not complying with respect to the smaller side yard setback requirements, five the right and five on the left, and it's one point three three to the overhang on each side, and it's not compliant with the fine fifteen-foot side yard setback. The existing is two point six six feet. That's to the overhang. Properties in the Witherspoon Jackson Historic District, and it was reviewed by the H P C and Elizabeth will provide comments. I'm done with this. Report applicant is proposing to remove the roof on the existing first floor den at the rear of the property and construct a nine-by-twelve master bedroom, second floor addition. An approximately eight-by-twelve deck is proposed off the kitchen on the rear elevation. The project requires the following variances. The smaller side yard setback on the addition, the requirements five those setback will be one point one feet to the overhang. The smaller side yard setback on the right, which would be the deck requirements five feet and proposed is two. And the combined side yard setback requirement requires variance two that proposed is three point one feet. They are seeking consideration under the C one criteria. Have any questions? I'd be glad to address them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, any questions?
Eric, I have one question on your memo. Uh, where it says the subject lot is noncompliant with respect to the following bulk requirements. You've got the lot, the lot area, the lot width and lot frontage. You say that the existing frontage and width are twenty-two point one five. That's gotta be an error.
Double check.
You see it on the first page?
Yeah, no, I'm looking for the survey. The lot on the application says twenty-two feet. And the survey is twenty-two point one five. Lots twenty-two point one five wide and it's a hundred feet deep. It looked like a mistake, but.
It does. It looks like it was just a carryover from the lot area. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Yes, sir.
Okay. Who will be presenting this application for the owner?
Steve, maybe we, maybe the board would like to hear from Elizabeth Kim.
Uh, okay, we can do that now. All right, Elizabeth, please.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. So as Mister Bridger indicated, the application was heard by H P C at their November twenty-first meeting. The property is located in the Witherspoon Jackson Historic District, which is classified as type two, which is reviewed according to what is visible from the public right of way. The applicants as discussed is proposing that addition over the one-story rear addition at the back of the property in addition to the deck. The applicants also were proposing exterior building improvements, which included removing, replacing existing the two dormers with three windows, replacing and removing and adding new windows to the existing house, replacing the front screen porch by adding new windows, door and siding, and replacing the existing roof shingles. Obviously, in order to facilitate these improvements to the rear of the house, the existing roof on the first floor and the chimney must be demolished. H P C's review and they unanimously endorsed the requested side yard bulk variance. And they they also felt that the improvements would substantially upgrade and improve the function of the existing house for the property owners. The enlargement of the house, which is the most significant change to the house is located in the rear and as several other applications that have come before your board. These were the most desirable improvements since they are the least visible from the right of way. All the exterior changes proposed by the applicant were deemed by H P C to be appropriate and compatible with the other structures within the district. And and they felt that the upgrade appearance would be appropriate. If your board approves this application pursuant to section ten B three nine zero, the applicant has performed appropriate noticing for demolition for historic preservation for the one-story rear addition as well as the chimney. H P C had made recommendations to applicant for consideration such as converting the enclosed porch to become an open porch again, similar to a number of the other properties within the district. They also recommended if the board approves the applicant's variance application as a condition of approval, that the applicants work with the H P C as administrative approval for final details of exterior improvements, such as the front door, lighting fixtures, retain the exterior presence of the chimney. And they also felt that the L E D lighting fixtures, they would recommend they be in a warm spectrum of the twenty-seven hundred Kelvin. That's all that we have and I'm built for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, I think the only, I do have one question though. It looks to me that on the side, uh, second floor addition is a window located there, and I believe that's the one plus, one foot plus setback. And a window in that close to the property line won't be allowed. And that's something that the building department will review, but I assume that wouldn't affect your approval if that window were eliminated.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Any questions of Elizabeth? Okay, all right. Who's going to present?
Good evening. This is Robert Pizzano. We are constructing and how are you? Good to see you. And we are construction managers assisting the owner and I believe Andrew Nauman is either in the waiting room or he is trying to get on this Zoom as a participant, so I don't know how he does that. Do you let him in?
Yes, sir.
Hi, it's Andrew Nauman. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. We can't see you yet.
All right, that is user error on my part. Let me see what I can do about that. Bear with me. Uh, in the interest in time, why don't I just speak to you and then if I hand it off to Bob, I'll try to come online. Again, hi, I'm Andrew Nauman. My wife Liz and I have owned.
Mr. Nauman, just just one moment, please. We do need to swear in, but we also actually need to see you because we're videotaping this. So. Perhaps.
Okay, here I am.
We are. Great. All right. Well, let me swear you in. Is your wife testifying with you?
She is not. She can't.
All right, Mister Nauman, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Karen, do we have to swear in Mister Pizzano?
We we will. I was gonna wait, but we can do that now. Mister Pizzano, you're also a P E. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All righty.
And I don't. Yes, yes, I can. I can offer expert engineering testimony to the extent that it it comes up in the application.
All right, and.
And I can, you know, I can give you my.
You're licensed in New Jersey?
Yeah, I'll give you a little of my credentials.
That's my fault. We're going backwards here. Let me just first swear you in. Do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
All righty, and now you're about to tell us about your credentials.
Sure. I am a licensed professional engineer licensed in New Jersey and other surrounding state jurisdictions. I've been licensed as a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey since two thousand three and working in the capacity of site development, site engineering, residential construction projects similar to this and have testified in front of zoning and planning boards and similar types of applications.
And Mister Pizzano, you indicated previously you're the construction manager for the project. Are you also the engineer record or is that somebody else?
I I am not, and there there is not. There is no, the there is, there is not in this application. The survey is, you know, is from when the house was purchased many years ago. There's, and so I I don't have professional engineering testimony. We are acting as a construction manager. We sort of organized this for them. So on this particular application, there has not been a ton of engineering, but
Okay.
Fair enough.
All righty, so who would like to go first, Mister Nauman or Mister Pizzano?
Well, let me, let me take the lead and and let Bob fill in the gaps. Again, Andrew Nauman, my wife Liz and I have owned twenty-five Birch for the last twenty years. The plan is to renovate the structure. It's getting close to a hundred years old. And for a variety of reasons, it's time to to take care of of the electrical systems, plumbing walls. And as we got into it, I think as Mister Bridger noted, we're we're thinking of adding a second story on top of a den. Right now it's just a a room that outcrops from the back. It's actually quite ugly. And so we thought that we take advantage of the space and pop, you know, extend a second bedroom there. The issue or the compelling special reason we have is, I don't know if you're familiar with these lots, but these are 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 small bungalows and they're very close to one another and literally there are four-foot alleys from one house to the next, and I can stretch out my arms and touch, touch both both houses in those alleys. And so as we start considering putting on the second floor, the whole house is 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 encroaching on the setbacks and the setbacks themselves. You know, if you only have four feet between the houses, you're maybe two, two feet to the property line. So as we started, started thinking about extending the second floor, by nature, if we're following that footprint, we're gonna fall into the in in encroach on that setback. So we're looking for relief from that setback so I can build that second floor in the existing footprint of of the den below it. From a a detriment to to the neighborhood, I mean, I don't. I would hope there is none. I hope people feel that this is an upgrade. As I said, that the house is in dire need of renovation. I think we had, as Ms. Kim notify, like, I I think we tried very hard to keep in the spirit in the scale of the neighborhood. And so my hope is that the neighborhood sees this as a net, net plus, a net upgrade for the, for the for the, for the area. So again, looking for relief for the setback so I can put the second floor on. And as far as I'm concerned, I, you know, I hope it's considered an upgrade for the entire neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you. Board members, do you have any questions of the owner? I I just have one. As I mentioned before, the window wall being so close to the side yard property line, I don't think the building code will allow you to put a window in it. Unless it's a fire-rated window and and they're incredibly expensive, but so as long as that doesn't affect what you're planning on doing, because there is a window on the back, then it's not an issue.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I wouldn't be able to put a window where on the.
On the side.
Facing the.
Facing your neighbor because the building code doesn't allow glass in a wall that's less than three feet from the property line.
Got it. If there's an existing window, so essentially what I'm doing is I'm taking one room and I'm extending it a little bit, that hundred odd square feet to make it a little larger. So I already have one window there. Can I keep that window?
I assume you can. That would be up to the building department. As long as you're not changing it, then you most probably will be allowed to keep it, but any, any new construction and new window would have to conform to the code. But that that will come out in your building department review.
Okay, sounds good. I understand.
Okay. All right. Mister Pizzano, is somebody else going to present or?
Uh, well, I'm happy to just give one, just one minute of overview and fill in some of the technical and perhaps engineering elements. So as Andrew had described, but just to put a little more, since we're not in person, to sort of describe it a little more clearly, the the proposed addition is and it is filling over an existing area of the building. That footprint currently exists in exactly the same spot with the setbacks to the side and to the rear, although that's not, we don't need relief there. It is the exact same footprint. So the footprint of the building is not changing at all. They're simply filling in the inside notch there. Uh, which is already occupied by a first story section of the building. So we're simply putting a second story on the existing first story to fill in that area. Likewise, on the other side where we need, where the relief is sought for the deck, there is a deck already there. There's a slider door and and so forth. So obviously there needs to be a way to step down out of the slider door. Same thing. That is filling in where that existing side setback currently is simply sort of squaring it off. And so that's all.
Okay. Any questions of Mister Pizzano? Okay. What we're going to do now, and you'll have you have a chance to answer this, we're going to go open the hearing up to the public since there are no comments from the board members. We'll open the comment, the hearing up to the public. Do you, Mister Pizzano or Mister Nauman, do you want to say anything before we do that? It's not necessary, but it's up to you.
No, not at all.
Okay, all right. With that, we'll open the meeting up to the public. Claudia, has anybody indicated that they might want to speak?
There are no hands.
Okay. All right, so hearing no comments in the public, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. And now we'll go into executive session, but once again, before we do that, Mister Pizzano, Mister Nauman, you have the opportunity to say something before we go into executive session and and vote.
Now, can I give you any more detail or do you have the elements that you need?
I I do. Board members, do you have any questions before we go into executive session?
I guess, Steve Chair, I have a question. You know, there was a number of comments, recommendations by historic preservation. What's gonna happen with them? What's agreed to, what you don't agree to? Could you, could you go through those?
Would you like me to or Ms. Kim or? I I can recollect them off the top of my head. I think one of the considerations was we got rid of the chimney because we're, we're not using oil, oil, oil furnace anymore. And so the idea was, well, in keeping in the neighborhood and the spirit of the neighborhood, would we consider putting up even a faux chimney? And we don't have the details on that, and I think that'd be as, you know, part of the administrative review, but yeah, absolutely. We're open to including a chimney. Another consideration and Ms. Kim helped me out. Another consideration was I think keeping the door red and whether we were gonna use the same door and and I think we thought, well, it's a renovation, so we'd probably replace the door, but would keep the color if that was important. The lighting, there's the issue about lighting and they recommended that we put lighting on the outside of the porch, and we thought, obviously, that's a good idea because there's stairs there. I forgot the other points, Ms. Kim. I don't know if you've got them there.
Um, yeah, and as far as the lighting goes, they talked about keeping that in the warm spectrum of the twenty-seven hundred Kelvin. And I think that you hit everything else. You hit the lighting. You talked about the the front door and the chimney, and that's all I see. And it was pretty gentle because there was a et cetera after that as well. So I think that whatever design details that were not finalized, that H P C would like to see that administratively if your board accepts that.
Well. Michael, does that answer?
The only other thing, Elizabeth, was a recommendation. It it said they they asked the applicants to consider converting the enclosed front porch, front porch back to an open porch.
Right, and they they did not want to. It was already enclosed, so of course, as a right, they were able to retain that, but we just asked because obviously, many of the porches within that historic district were open, and then later on they they became enclosed. So it was just a question that was asked of the applicant, and they did say that they wanted to retain it to be enclosed.
Okay, so bas- basically the condition then for H P C would be that the applicants work with you for administrative approval of the final details of the exterior improvements.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Michael, are you okay with that?
Yes.
I have one question, though. Basically, then, the drawings that were presented to us that the board has reviewed are consistent with, if we vote on this, it'll be consistent with that because it seems to be then the only change that that the applicant was going to make was eliminating the chimney. And you're asking for it to be put back on. The owner and the applicant is saying they will do that. So that's it then, right? I mean, there are no other changes that would affect our approval.
Correct, right. No other changes, just details, right.
Okay. All right. Okay. Are there any other questions of Mister Pizzano or Mister Nauman? Yes, Donna.
Hi, I just have one. The the smaller side yard setback, the right side is now the setback actual is is one point one and you're going to pull it back to two feet. I'm not quite sure how you would do that if you're adding something.
I don't think they were going to change the setback. The setback is as it exists now. That's what Mister Pizzano said.
That was in Derek's memo.
It was to the overhang and they're talking, they're gonna do a deck, so the setback to the overhang is greater than it is to the deck because the deck is pretty much flush with the edge of the building. Does that answer your question?
I guess. I'm just not picturing it, but thank you.
The setback will be, the setback will be the one point three feet.
So the, there's two setbacks. So the overhang and so for left and right, let's just, um, let's just be standing on Birch, looking at the front door. So the left side, that would apply to the building construction. That has an overhang because of the gutters and so forth, and so forth. That's where the 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 one point one is measured to. On the right side, it is the deck, which will be directly flush with no overhang, and that's exactly two.
Okay. All right, so there's no change in the setbacks.
Well, okay.
What exists now in some form.
It's not one point one now. It's it's actually two. I guess, okay.
Or the, for the deck side. Yeah, one point, the one point one is on the other side where there's, you know, a soffit and a gutter.
Right, no, I I was just looking at at the memo and the memo says one point three three feet for both sides right now. Which will be changed to one point one and two.
Yeah, that's on the second page. The project description has the revised setbacks.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, because what, yeah, what, okay, and the clarification there is, so this is. Right, because what, yeah, what, okay, and the clarification there is, so this is just regarding what we're proposing. So you, you, you are, you are correct that the existing condition may be that, but we're not altering the building on the, on the right side. For the building, just the deck. Does that make sense?
So, we can buy.
I mean, she's speaking to a specific document and it's Derek's memo. So your explanation may not explain what she read.
Sure, understood.
It just doesn't work.
Okay.
Donna, are you comfortable with this?
I, I think so. I, I think whatever the number is, I'm, okay.
Okay. Um, any other board members get a comment? Okay, if we have no comments, does somebody want to make a motion?
Oh, moved.
Second, C one.
Thank you. Okay, any comments on the motion from anyone? Okay, Claudia, can you please call a roll?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Shriver?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thanks.
Motion's approved.
Thank you. Have a good night.
I just want to get back to the agenda here. All right, so our second and last hearing is going to be two fifty Mercer Street. Case number Z twenty-two dash two sixty-nine. Block one oh four oh two. Lot thirteen in the R five zone. Karen, is uh, everything in order?
It is. The noticing is in order. The board has jurisdiction tonight.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Derek, can you review your memo with us? Then we'll hear from Ms. Kim.
Thank you. Chairman, uh, Michael and Anna Prolitsky are the owners of two fifty Mercer Street. They're seeking a floor area ratio, permit to replacement, expansion and reorientation of an existing garage. And bulk variances requested permit construction of a garage in exception to the sixteen foot required setback from their nearest portion of the front facade. Subject property is located in the R five zone in the former Princeton Township and the lot itself and the property, the property is non-complying with regard to the fifteen foot required rear yard setback, the existing is approximately nine feet. The property was also uh, listed in a historic, a nineteen sixty-seven Princeton Basset survey and referenced in the uh, master plan and it's uh, subject to a courtesy review by the Historic Preservation Commission. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing two-car garage which faces Olden Lane and replace it with a three plus car attached garage. The proposed garage will have two doors facing Mercer and one door will face Olden. The subject property is a corner lot which has two front yards. Um, the proposing front-facing Mercer Street garage is setback in excess of sixteen from the nearest portion of the facade. However, the Olden Lane facade does not comply with the required sixteen foot setback. In addition, um, the garage addition slightly increases the uh, existing FAR from twenty-two point four seven four percent, excuse me, or seven thousand six hundred ninety-one square feet uh, to a proposed FAR of twenty-three point eight or eight thousand one hundred and sixty-two square feet. The maximum permitted in the zone is twenty percent um, or five thousand six hundred and thirty-one square feet. Um, they've requested a uh, D four variance, um, and as you're aware, uh, the applicant does not have to necessarily demonstrate that the site can accommodate the problems associated. Has to demonstrate that the site can accom- accommodate the problems associated with the increased floor area and not that the site is particularly suited for more intensive development. Um, this requires five out of seven votes. Uh, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to ask, answer them. And then as far as the bulk requirement, uh, the garage on the Olden Lane facing side um, is actually protrudes out twenty-three and a half feet from the nearest facade of the, the, the building and uh, they've requested consideration under both the C one and C two criteria. That's my memo. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer.
Board members, any questions of Mister Bridger? Okay, um. Elizabeth, would you like to review your memo with us?
Yes, thank you, Mister Chairman. Um, so this application also was reviewed by HPC at their November twenty-first meeting. They came in obviously for a variance relief in order to facilitate the replacement of their existing attached two-car garage um, and to replace it with a new three-car garage. Uh, the property contains a house which is believed to be a Stedman House which was built in circa eighteen fifty-two. Um, and as Mister Bridger had stated, um, it is a suggested historic site um, within the Princeton Master Plan. Therefore, it was referred to the Princeton Historic Preservation Commission for their review and recommendations to your board. Uh, the property is located in the southwest corner of Olden Lane and Mercer. The HPC unanimously um, determined that the existing two-car garage is out of character with the applicant's house and they had no objections to that portion of the two-car garage being removed. HPC also noted that there is heavy evergreen buffer on the property on the Mercer side. And um, the new two-car garage will most likely not be very visible from Mercer's first road. However, it will still be visible from Olden Lane. Uh, there was a lengthy discussion at HPC's meeting um, with the applicant's architect concerning the architectural design of the new three-car garage. Um, while the proposed architectural plans represents a substantial, substantially improved design to what currently exists, they felt that it still did not match or was compatible with the existing house the way that it was designed. Um, and they felt that there should be consideration given for revisions to the architectural style and roof of the proposed garage to make it more compatible. So there was a lot of different opinions that HPC had about the house. The improvements that could be ma- um, excuse me, to the garage, what improvements could be made to the garage. They had no objection to a three-car garage. There was talk about perhaps um, reducing the size, um, perhaps um, creating a little bit more space that was not going to be intruding into some of the usable space of the house and even the Bilko door that might be in the back. Um, so um, HPC did unanimously support that um, a variance should be um, um, it's probably necessary for them to put this new garage on and so they were supportive of the variances the applicant was requesting. However, with that, they asked of the applicant return to HPC to finalize the architectural design with the approved footprint that your board will grant with their architectural plans. Um, if the, if your board has any questions, um, I'm happy to answer them. They were per- that there was unfortunately, there was not a unanimous determination on what they felt as far as the design, but they did feel that there was a variance probably necessary for them to be able to put the garage where they're proposing and they did feel it was an appropriate location.
Okay, I'm a, I'm a little confused, but um, I guess, um, well, do any board members have any question of, of Elizabeth? Because I think the questions I have need to be answered by both Elizabeth and the owners. So we can do that as we progress. Okay, um, any board members have any questions before we move on to the presentation? Okay, um.
Am I up?
You're up.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mister Cohen. Um, and I appreciate Mister Bridger um, and Miss, Miss Kim, um, their comments and especially Mister Bridger because um, he basically gave me, gave my introduction, so I'm gonna flip that page. Um, and uh, I would note that um, we are seeking the variance.
Be sworn in, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
You need to be sworn in.
No, Stephen, um, Ms. Rubrite is the attorney for the applicant.
Yes, actually, I'm sorry, and I did not introduce myself because I, I usually do that right before my introduction and, and I was um, so, so happy that I didn't have to do my introduction, that I forgot to introduce myself. My name is Susan Rubrite. I am an attorney with Brock Eichler in Roseland, New Jersey, and I am here um, this evening representing the applicant's um, Mister and Mrs. Proletsky. Um, so I don't have, I, I am an officer of the court, so I, I am generally not sworn in. At any rate, so I would like to then thank again Mister Bridger for his introduction. Um, we are seeking the variances under both the C one and the C two standards, the um, hardship standard as well as the better zoning alternative standard, given that we are uh, in our opinion vastly improving the, the visual impact of the, the out of, out of um, the, the old and, and out of character garage. Um, and we also, that's requiring also that we are increasing slightly the floor area ratio variance. Um, what I would like to do is have Mrs. Proletsky, I see her, she's, I see her on the call. Um, have her go over some of the, some of the, the background and the reasons for why they're doing what they're doing in terms of the property and the garage. And then I have Dan Ward, Daniel Ward, who is our architect, and he can um, also provide some details. We have a site plan we can go over um, showing the board that this is, that this is, that this is a, a corner lot and that also how the house sits on the lot and that that dictates in many respects um, where the garage is being placed, is being replaced. And um, the, the um, landscaping and the, the heavy landscape buffer that is being, that it, it's in existence. And um, showing really that sort of supporting our, our hardship argument for this being a corner lot and where the existing conditions are. Um, so if that's acceptable to the board, what I would like to do is have Miss, Miss, Mrs. Proletsky um, sworn and then um, I'll, we'll go through a number of uh, different items um, in connection with the property.
Why don't we, at this time, just to make it easy, why don't we swear in both Miss uh, Proletsky and Mister Ward? Those are your two, those are your only.
All right, and then I would ask uh, both of you, please to raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
Okay, Miss Prolet, Mrs. Proletsky, if you could um, just introduce yourself and um, I'd like you to go through and just let the board know uh, when you and your husband bought the property and then describe in general the house and the property from your perspective so that the board understands the reasons behind what you're proposing.
Sure, good evening. Uh, my name is Anna Proletsky. We have owned the property since uh, twenty ten. Both of our children went to local schools. And um, we have supported Princeton Historic Society by putting the house on the tour. So we very much appreciate the significance of the house. Um, actually, two days ago, we got another letter from a uh, historic, historical architectural um, member of the community who's preparing for a class to see if he could come visit and see on which part of the house, the picture of uh, Lawrence Hutton, who extended the house in um, eighteen ninety-nine to nineteen oh two set with Helen Keller and Mark Twain. So that is the house. We get the trolley by. Uh, having said that, it is a, it is um, through doing some research and reviewing the books. Um, it appears that in nineteen sixty-six, nineteen sixty-seven, the property was subdivided, which is why we have uh, too small a lot for the size of the house. And another house on Olden Lane was built effectively in our driveway. Um, so therefore, in that same style of nineteen sixty architecture, the backyard has a box of a garage with a flat roof and another structure with a flat roof that uh, since then we have updated. So the garage is leaking. It is a nice sore. Um, we have updated the Olden Lane landscaping to improve the buffer there as well, which I can tell you uh, spontaneously even during COVID across the street, the neighbors have appreciated. So it will overall be less visible. Um, but the garage facing Olden Lane is where the variance is, has two um, well nineteen sixties garage doors that need to be repaired. In addition to that, the reason we're doing one uh, door is because our architect has helped us navigate. While it's a massive driveway, it's not an easy way to put the car in and out of the garage. So it's actually improving the traffic. And for those familiar with the corner, can also appreciate that we have a lot of U-turns happening in our driveway. And um, so that's the purpose, right? My husband works in the hospital, hence not on the call with me. Garage is essential to us, um, especially when it's not functional. So uh, hence the proposal. And then um, as Miss Kim just shared with you, um, there were some, I believe, architectural suggestions that uh, based on the timing of the review with the board, we said we would consider, but we have not even received them yet. So uh, today's just ensuring that the footprint could be approved so we can proceed.
Right, under- understood, um, Anna, and what we're gonna do, um, Dan, Dan has um, some of the renderings as well to show and, and the, and photographs, I, I believe were part of our application um, showing the existing garage and then um, Dan can also go in, into a little bit more about what the HPC had discussed and, and what, what is being proposed. Um, is there anything else, um, Ms. Proletsky, that you'd like to be able to describe to the board?
No.
At this time, okay, great. Okay, thank you so much. Okay, so um, Mister Ward is our next, is my next witness. Um, and uh, what I'd like to do, if we can, uh, Mister Ward, if you can bring up I'd just like to, so I, I'm sure that everybody's been by the property and knows the property, but just in terms of setting the scene for and to further um, Ms. Prolet, Mrs. Proletsky's testimony, if everyone can see um, the nature of where the driveway is and it's not a typical corner lot. It's, it's kind of a V shape where the driveway is. So Dan, are you able to do that?
Mister Ward, before you testify, do you want to qualify him? Are you offering as an expert or?
Yes, I'm so, yes, I am. So, so Dan, um, if you could give the board the benefit of your educational and professional background and then also um, describe your, your relationship um, with this project.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Casey.
I've been an ar- a registered architect in the state of New Jersey since nineteen eighty. So, and, and most of my practice is in this area of New Jersey, Princeton, Hopewell.
Excuse me, Mister Ward, you've testified before this board before. I have.
I testified at your last meeting.
Right, and we accepted you then, so we'll accept you now.
Okay, thank you so much. And then, um, Mister Ward, it's just, if you can, and you're the ar- you're the architect of record and have been working with with your clients, correct, Miss, Mister and Mrs. Proletsky?
That's correct.
Okay, great. Um, so if you could um, put up briefly the, the site plan and go through basically um, you know, Mister Bridger was, was very uh, very helpful in his report going through the lot size. Um, but if you could, if we could show that visually, I believe that those were exhibits or those were part of the application. But just to orient the board then for further consideration when we go through the actual um, architectural design for the garage.
Do I, can, can you see my screen?
No.
And now. Now I can. Now we see the snorkeler. There we go. Okay, great.
Okay, on the right side here, you can see the area plan. We're talking, this, the property, this is the perimeter of the property, it's on the corner of Mercer Road and Olden Lane. Olden Lane is the extension of Lover's Lane. And then zoom in a little bit here. This is the site plan. Mercer Street runs across the top here. Olden Lane runs down the right side. This is an existing gravel turning, actually to an entrance and exit. And the gray, what you're seeing here in gray is the existing structure, this is the existing house. And this portion of the gray here is the existing garage.
And then the hatch is the overlay of the new portion?
Yeah, the hatch represents the footprint of the expand, the new expanded garage. So what we're proposing to do in terms of circulation here is to have one large garage door on this side facing Mercer Street with two cars that can pull in there, that's a double door. That's the garage door that you're not really even going to be able to see from Mercer Street. There's a law, all along Mercer Street is a very heavy evergreen hedge. I don't think you can even see much of the main house. And in addition to that double garage door, we're proposing a single garage door in this section of the perimeter wall.
That's where you're at, that's where your arrow is.
Right.
Where it is right now.
You can see here, this is the 15-foot setback line from the southern property line. And this, here, I'm sorry, Susan.
I'm sorry. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
We have a 34-foot prevailing setback line off of Olden Lane, and that's represented by this dotted line. And we have a prevailing setback off of Mercer, and that's represented by this line. So our buildable area inside of setbacks is bounded by those lines.
So there's basically no place else to put the garage, correct?
Correct, pretty much. If we have to be, we comply with the 16-foot setback from the Mercer Street. But we're projecting out in front of the existing facade on the Olden Lane side.
Gotcha, okay. And in terms of other, were there any other considerations for placement of the garage? Will it connect to the house?
It does connect to the house. There's a narrow connection here, which is actually the same as the existing garage, how the existing garage connects to the house. There's a doorway here leading into the foyer area and a kitchen, the kitchen's back here.
Okay, and anything else that you want to go over then in connection with this plan?
With this plan, I don't think so.
Okay.
Pretty much it.
Okay. And then you've got, do you want to talk now about the photographs of the existing garage, or do you want to talk about the? But let's go to that, let's, do you have?
Can I go through the floor plan for the?
Sure, absolutely. Let's go through the floor plan, and then we can. It's your show.
Ms. Rubrite, do you want to actually mark, have these marked as exhibits?
They were, this was part of the plan set, I believe, correct, Dan? This is part of the plan set?
This is part of, in your package, you should have this already.
Yeah, counsel, if it's your practice to mark them, I do not have, I do not have an objection marking them also.
Normally, we do, so why don't we?
Okay, that's fine.
Do you want these all just collectively to be A1, or do you want to identify these separately?
If it's your practice to mark them, then A1 would be the site plan, and then we could mark the next sheet A2, which is the floor plan.
Okay, great.
Okay, Dan, go ahead.
Okay, so this is the floor plan for the proposed garage. The existing garage is represented by this dotted line here and this dotted line here. So the proposed garage is the same width as the existing garage. It's just expanded to the front and to the back. So this is the double garage door facing Mercer, and this here is the single garage door facing Olden. So everyday cars park here, occasional used cars can be parked here. As you can see here, this is, that dotted line represents our setback lines again that I showed you on the site plan. And you can see we've extended this within a few inches of our prevailing setback on the Olden Lane side. And to provide circulating space around this parking space, we jogged the Olden facade to kind of follow the line, the sloping line of the setback and to provide a little space here. So that's why this end elevation has this configuration.
Not so that I think as you described, so that there's access to the vehicle without being crushed.
If we came, if we came straight across and didn't do this little job,
Right.
we would have difficulty getting this door.
Getting in and out of the vehicle.
Squeezed.
Gotcha, okay. Okay, all right. And, okay, and then you show the access into the, into the house.
Right, this is the connection into the house. Into a little foyer, they've got a little office area here, and then beyond that is the kitchen.
Okay. What next?
Well, let me show you this picture here, or I can walk you through the elevations first. This is the elevation viewed from the south, that's the kind of rear. We're looking towards Mercer here, but this is, this is an elevation that's not visible from off the property.
It's not, all right, so we'll mark this A3 then.
That's fine.
That's the Mercer Street elevation?
No, that's the south elevation.
Oh, okay, got it, all right.
Well, all the elevations are on A3, so.
Okay.
This is the Mercer Street elevation. Right behind this section here is their existing kitchen, and then there's this two-and-a-half-story colonial structure. This is the double garage door facing Mercer. And we're proposing to carry through the existing stucco finish, the existing colors, carry the existing water table that runs all the way around the house at the first floor level, and pick up on some of the architectural details.
All right, so that's important, then, the color, and I guess, do you have a, do you have a color rendering of this?
I do.
Okay, so, but the color will be consistent or the same as the house, correct?
Yes, the same as the existing house.
Okay, good. Okay, and what's next?
This is a.
But it's not going to be yellow, right? Is it?
It is yellow, yeah.
Is it this yellow?
Well, this might be, I have a limited palette on my computer.
Okay.
It's a little more pale than this.
It's not lemon yellow, okay.
It's a Princeton yellow, and we matched stacker, we just painted it.
Right, so the finishes on the proposed garage will match the existing finishes on the house. And the slope on the roof, roof lines, will match the existing roof. The existing roof is slate, so we're gonna go with a simulated slate roof here. Maybe cycloplastic, but it's pretty convincing. While I'm here, a couple of the items that I think were issues with the HPC.
Yes, would you talk about those?
Yeah, specifically, they thought these returns here were a little too long, they should be reduced in size. I think basically they felt that this, at least one board member in particular felt that this was a bit busy. So they wanted to simplify it a bit, maybe take off the shutters, reduce these returns. Just basically simplify it.
And we can do that, correct?
Absolutely, we can do that. Now, if I could just show you this picture.
Okay, now that has not been submitted as part of the application, so, Ms. Casey, I think I would want to mark that then A5, and we would call that, how do you call that, Dan?
This is the photograph from Olden with the proposed garage superimposed.
What, just to clarification, what was A4 then?
That was the colorized version of the addition.
Okay.
And here you can see the actual yellow. It's a little.
That's right, yeah.
More subtle than what was shown. On that.
Gotcha.
Rendering. So.
Yep. Dan, does this, does this superimposition, does that show with the reduced returns, or is that?
No, no, this, this is this is the same as the elevation station.
And then it also obviously still shows the shutters as well, so we would be removing those. If the board were agreed with the HPC, or if the HPC wants us to do that.
Correct. Right. So the double garage door is on on the wall that ends at this corner. This is the garage door that violates the 16-foot setback. So, and then behind that, you can see the existing structure, which is we think we're making a considerably considerable improvement to it. I can show you this picture without the superimposition, if you like.
Yeah, I think that, just so that the, so that the board gets the full impact of how this is going to be an improvement, I think that would be helpful.
There it is.
Okay, and that, Ms. Casey, that also was part of our application, but we can mark that A6, which is how would you describe that, Dan?
Again, it's the view from Olden Lane.
Okay.
And we feel, and the HPC felt that this is architecturally problematic, this existing garage with the flat roof. There was a kind of half-hearted attempt to mimic this window here with these windows over the garage doors. But we don't think it's very successful.
Okay. Okay. Anything else? Dan?
No, I think that's it for me. Do you want me to return the screen?
I think that may be a good idea.
Let me ask, let me ask, this is, I just have a question here. So the HPC has asked you to come back in to address some concerns that they have. Aside from what you talked about, which is some very minor modifications on the roof and the elimination of a pair of shutters, what other changes do you anticipate?
I think that's pretty much it. It was relative, and Ms. Kim can correct me if I'm wrong here, but the criticisms were pretty minor, they were architectural details.
If I might, if I might add also, I think, for instance, Dan, do you recall one of the members mentioned suggesting a hip roof? And you opined that that would not be appropriate, as there are no hip roof roofs used in the house.
Right, and typically not in this kind of vintage of a house would you find a hip roof. But that particular member, I think, was the only one that felt that way.
Right, yeah, I mean, I just, I just wanted to review what, because the chairman asked, you know, what were some of the the comments and what were we addressing from the comments? There was one member who I think commented that the gable was not so, oh, that complimented and thought that the gable was not so large for the size of the house. Because there had been some comments about the size of the gable, so that, that member in particular thought that this was that the gable was an acceptable size. And then there were some, one of the members, or one or two of the members suggested that there was dead space inside of the garage, but I think, Dan, you explained that it was
Yeah, it's.
Going to be used, but, and there was no way to really eliminate that.
Right, it's a large it's a large three-car garage, but the, Mike and Anna have their wine collection in there, they've got space for storing lawn furniture. So.
Sort of normal storage type.
Yeah, for a house this size, I don't think the garage is too big.
And there's really no way to eliminate that without that's productive in terms of reducing the size of the garage or changing the design, correct?
We think it's appropriate.
Right, okay. And I guess I would defer then to Ms. Kim, I think that we were my opinion was that, that, that if we agreed to those basically minor changes, reducing the size of the returns and removing the shutters to sort of make it quote-unquote "less busy," I think that that was something that was acceptable. And we would, we will, we did agree that we would go back to the HPC and just make sure that they were okay with that, that there was nothing else dramatic that we needed to do.
So I just wanted to add a few comments to that, so I believe one of the other concerns was they felt that the double gable roof was part of the busyness, that they felt that, and I understood, they understood the reason why you had it, because you had to project that one section out to be able to allow access in and out of the car. So I believe that the reason that you had done that is to just kind of work with that projection, but they did feel that it was busy, that it was not necessary to do that, and they were looking for a better solution for that. And I, I think that the roof actually was a big conversation. The gentleman who talked about the change in the roof, there was another member who actually thought perhaps a flat roof again, which they all, after a certain point, they decided, no, that was not a good solution, that that although that they were looking at the perametal roof that Mr. Enderby was looking at, that it was not traditionally the type of roof line that went historically with this house. I have to say, oftentimes, when you have in addition to an historic house, you do not necessarily mimic every historic detail, you just want it to be compatible. And I believe that the applicant Anna, I think that you said that you were waiting to see something that came from the commission as far as a alternate design, and actually, the member did draw something up, however, the HPC attorney felt that, and maybe it was a misunderstanding, he felt that it was not appropriate to present that to the applicant at this time, until actually the zoning board determined whether they were going to approve it, and if that was the case, if they could subject the final design with HPC, and at that point, he would present it. And I apologize if there was a misunderstanding, because he was happy to present it, but he was told that he needed to wait.
Thank you. I don't know, it's our first time to go through the process, and, you know, I was taking notes, so either way, we just thought that we wanted to make it to this hearing with the approval from H PC, and then you know, we knew that there is another conversation. Thank you.
And, and at one point, actually, at the meeting, they were going to not make a determination about supporting the variances, however, we knew that the applicant was hoping to have something from HPC, and so they did determine that that was the best location for a garage, and that for them to have a three-car garage, it did need to be larger than what they had for the two-car, but possibly that there was some opportunity to perhaps massage the size and that configuration of the footprint in that area.
So, if I might, there was a memorandum that was dated December 12th that we received. I guess it was yesterday, the 13th, that Ms. Kim was, I actually, I believe Ms. Kim forwarded it or counsel for the HPC.
I did work to you, yes.
Yeah, and, and if I might quote Ms. Kim, it Yeah, and, and if I might quote Ms. Kim, it's the last paragraph is that. Um, after the review by HPC, HPC voted unanimously to recommend to your board granting the variance relief sought. For the maximum floor area ratio and the garage setback on this corner property. Subject to having the applicants return to HPC to finalize the architectural design within the approved footprint. As reflected on the current architectural plan. So, um, and we agreed to that. So I, I, I think that, um. I just want to make clear that it was my understanding from being at the meeting and then also from this memorandum that there, that. While we're going to return to the HPC, um, for addition, any, any additional input and any, um. For us to show, uh, some of the changes as Mr. Ward just presented. Um, I don't think we were talking about, you know, doing any kind of massive redesign. But, you know, Ms. Ms. Proletsky is, is shaking her head no.
You mean by massive redesign? I think it's all the details that we talked about. And I guess I was just trying to clarify that one of the, um, members. Was concerned about some of the encroachment in the back, not in the front towards Alden, which where your violation is. It's towards the back where it kind of, um. Isolates one of the windows in the house and some, I, I believe that he talked about a Bilco door back there. And possibly there was able to be pulled back, but again, that is all subject to whatever the zoning board approves.
Yeah, and.
But, but that's not, I, I thought that's not that part of the zoning, sorry. And I, and it was a kitchen window. And there was a bit of a confusion on behalf of that. Member because again, this house is old and it appears that he has been there. And I think there was a confusion because he was talking about also, um. Uh, sun, uh, whatever, skylights and there are no skylights, so. So, so I think there was a bit, that part of the discussion, there was just, I think, a confusion about the, the house a bit as well.
Elizabeth, I had a, a procedural question for you. You've indicated HPC would like the applicants to come back. Uh, as a condition of. Zoning board approval. If you're unable to reach agreement with the applicant. What is HPC proposing then? Because at that point they will have received their zoning board approval, so.
Well, there's own, their, their zoning board recommendation of approval. They, they're an advisory board.
Correct, correct, but as I, if I understand it, HPC is recommending. That as a condition of zoning board approval, the applicant. Be required to return to HPC. To finalize the architectural design.
And I think, if I might, I think, you know, we agree, we agreed to that and I think as long as it's within the scope of. The items that we talked about, the returns, um, on the, on the, on the molding and, um. You know, nothing that's. I, I'd just like to go back, I mean, I think Ms. Proletsky, um, was very cogent in her. Discussion about their love of this house and their desire to make sure that it's consistent and compatible. With the style of the house. Um, it's, it's something that I think, you know, they've opened up the house. For his, for historic tours and, you know, certainly we take it very seriously. I think, I think that she made that very clear. So if we can, we would agree to return to the, to the HPC, which we, we, we agreed to do. But anything that might be, I mean, it's their house. So, you know, I, I. I think we have to be conscious of the fact that we don't want to force a property owner to redesign something. That may, that they feel may not be consistent with their vision for how. They want their garage to look and be consistent and compatible with the design and the historic nature of. The house. So I, I think we may be. I don't, over lawyering this, um, over talking this perhaps. Um, but, um, you know, you, you know, Ms. Casey, you're shaking your head, so.
I'm shaking, I'm shaking my head because, um. That's why, that's why I raised this with Ms. Kim. If H, so, so what, what we're hearing tonight already is that. At least some of the HPC members had a concern with the size of the garage. They want to massage the size. So. Assuming the board approves this application tonight and they add the condition that's requested by HPC and the applicant comes back to HPC. And HPC is, you know, not, not happy with. Let's say the applicant says, no, I'm, I'm not gonna make all these changes. There are certain changes I won't make. I won't make all of them. My question for Elizabeth was, so then what is HPC's position then? What, where do we go then?
Good question, Karen.
That's the only part of it that gives me a little bit of pause because ordinarily. It comes to us with HPC's, um. Input and as an advisory board, then it's up to the zoning board. Do they accept all the recommendations? Do they not? But here we have an open piece, so it goes back. But we're already hearing a little bit from the applicant that there are certain things they will do. Or they understood that they were gonna do, but that. Appears that we might be going beyond that purview, so. I'm not clear on what happens then.
Can I, can I make a comment, please? Uh, this is, this is getting far too complicated. Uh, there's, obviously, we're, we're, we're not gonna approve a footprint. And have the pieces filled in by, um. The HPC and the applicant. Um, I'd like to hear from the other board members, which will, will have, will have comment, but it appears to me. That this is a, in my opinion, a very nice solution to a very difficult problem. And it would, I would think, and again, subject to comments from the other board members. You know, it, it should be relatively easy to resolve this. Because it sounds like the various members of the HPC are not in agreement with what's going on. What should go on. And this shouldn't, this should, we shouldn't put this. Burden on the applicant at this stage of the project. They've come before us with a solution. Again, subject to our review, we can accept or reject it. And to go back and require that the HPC. In a sense has jurisdiction over this when. I think at least the way I, uh. Interpret what Ms. Kim's saying, there's a lot of controversy, controversy with the members. Everybody, there's no. Uniformity in that. So there's really no direction given by the HPC. To the owner other than the very simple modifications to the trim on the end of the gable and the shutters. So. I'd like to, I think, go through, open this up to public comment, have. Go through that, see what the public has to say, then again, then have a discussion with the board. To see what the board would suggest in this. Cause I'd, I'd just like to simplify it. It, it just seems to be getting too complicated.
I agree with you, Steve.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's, it's, I'm not, you know, it, it, it puts, it puts the. Owner in a very difficult position. It's a very difficult house to work with. I was in that house many years ago. And it's gorgeous. It's just on a very difficult lot, on a very difficult corner. And I think the solution they've come up with, in my opinion, is, is very nice. Um, so.
Let's, uh, let's move on without too much comment.
Okay.
And come back to the board as you recommend.
Okay, so, um, I guess, um. Do you want to complete your testimony? We'll open this up to the public, then we'll, we'll go through that and then we'll have a discussion with the board members.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I would just like to touch briefly on the variance standards. As I, as I noted, we, we've, uh, requested the variance relief under both the hardship standard. And the flexible C better zoning alternative. And I would submit that under the C two sta- standard. That, um, we're certainly promoting a desirable visual environment. Through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement by replacing the garage with something that's. Much more compatible and consistent with the, um, the nature of the house. Um, I would also, uh, that, and that's purpose I of the, of, uh, the municipal land use law, section two. I would also submit that it, uh, comports with, uh, letter J, which is purpose J. To promote a conservation of historic sites and districts. Where, where, we're replacing a nineteen sixties ugly structure with something that is mu- much more compatible. Again, uh, as I noted with, with, uh, purpose I. Um, therefore accordingly, because those purposes are further than I would submit that purpose A. Is also, uh, fulfilled, which is to encourage municipal action. To guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state. In a manner which will promote the public health, safety morals and general welfare. And I would submit that we are doing that, we're, we're making the, the site, um, more attractive to the general public when they're passing by. Um, in that regard, I would, uh, note that the negative criteria, which must also be proven under the C one and C two standards are also satisfied. In that, um, there's no substantial detriment to the public good. Um, and that we will not substantially impair the intent and purposes of the zone plan and the zoning ordinance. This is a unique lot. It's a corner lot. It was subdivided off as Ms. Pro- as Mrs. Proletsky noticed. Uh, noted and the, the ways to improve. And, and, um, replace the garage so that it has access to the street and that there is adequate access. To the garages themselves is limited by the nature, the unique nature of this property. Um, in terms of the FAR variance, it's really in my, in, in our opinion, it's, it's a technical type of variance here because. Generally the floor area ratio is applied to, not to residences, although I have seen it more and more applied to residential. Uses, but it's, um. It, it's defined as the sum of all floor, the sum of all floors of buildings or structures compared to the total lot area. And it's, it's to make sure that the lot can handle the intensity of the development. And here we're going, the, the maximum floor area ratio here is twenty percent. It's currently at twenty-two point four percent and we will be increasing it to twenty-three point eight percent. I would submit that that's a, uh, de minimis. Increase that would not, that will not be noticeable. And as Mr. Bridger noted, um. We do not have to show that the property is particularly suited. For this, um, for the FAR, but that the site can handle the increase. And again, it's, it's really a de minimis increase. And, um. It, it's, it should be, in our opinion, it should be granted. Um, so with that, I would ask the board, um, to grant the variances and the application. And, um, to note, uh, what we have requested, what we've been requested and that what we will, we will return to the HPC. With the proposals, um, and, um. And accept any, any input that we believe is consistent with what we're trying to achieve. Um, for the addition, which is to make it consistent. Um, in form and color and attitude, um, with the existing property. And I thank you for your kind attention.
You're welcome. Okay, board members, any question of the applicant or the attorney? Okay, um. We'll open this up to the public right now, if that's acceptable to everyone. Okay, all right. So, uh, Claudia, has anyone indicated they might want to speak to this application?
There are no hands.
Okay, all right. Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public portion. Do you, either of you want to add something before we, the board starts deliberation or discussion?
I don't have any, anything further to present, Mr. Chairman.
All right. So, um. Board members, do you want to chime in or can I just one quick statement on my part? I think this, I think this has gotten. A little bit complicated. Um, there's a proposal before us this evening. It has a footprint, it has elevations. Um, in my opinion, they're consistent with the style of the house. The, the two minor details suggested by the HPC seem to me to be purely up to the. Uh, owner and the architect to make that decision and, uh. I'm very comfortable with this, the way it is. And I'm just concerned that it, this will put a burden on the applicant that could drag on. Um, so with that, board members? Comments?
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that and I, uh. I, I wouldn't want to put the burden on the applicant to agree to something unseen by them, right? That they haven't yet, uh, had an opportunity to. Um, to view or respond to.
Other comments? Michael, did you?
Well, yeah, I, I agree with that too, um. You know, we have numbers in front of us regarding the setback. We have numbers in front of us regarding the FAR. That's what we're voting on. And unless those zoning related numbers change. There's no obligation or a necessity for the owner to come back to us. Cause we've made zoning decisions with the variances, so. Um, whatever takes place between HPC and the owner. Um, unless there's some, um, substantive changes. In zoning facts or, or, uh, physical facts. It doesn't come back to us.
I agree.
I'm a, I'm a, oh, Donna, did you want to go?
No, you can go first.
I, I'm kind of agreeing with Karen. I'm kind of confused. Uh, we take recommendations from. The historical group. And the, and the recommendation to us is to approve this and. And, you know. In the description of it, somebody said, well, somebody thought the facade was busy. Well, what if, what if I think the facade looks terrific the way they designed it? I mean, is that opinion any different than anybody else's opinion? If the Historical Society didn't vote on it and didn't say, we don't like this. We don't think that this is a historical, uh, reconstruction. And they should have voted on that and said that we don't approve, we don't agree with this. They didn't do that. They said, and some members are having problems with. Busyness or with our window. And I, I think we approve this and we. They go on with it. I like the design as it is. I don't see why they have to shorten those. So that's because somebody thinks it's busy. It, it's architecturally sound to the building, so. And I'm all for just approving it as is and letting them go on with the building. I don't think they need to go back to.
So if I could just address that comment, so obviously historic preservation, when they review an application, they don't. Really look at it from their personal taste point of view. Because they will say, you know, I really think this looks great, but I don't think it's appropriate within this setting, within this architecture. So that's the way they review architectural elements for an addition or alterations. Um, but, so what I have to say is, actually, the, um. The HPC attorney felt that they were so divided that they really couldn't have a unified. Memo. And that's what they were hoping to do for the applicant and that's. Kind of one of the reasons why they said, but we support the variance for the applicant. But we have these concerns about these architectural features on the house. And of course, they are advisory to your board, so they're only recommendations.
And I think, I appreciate that, um. I agree with Michael that, that as long as we're approving a design. I agree with Michael that, that as long as we're approving a design, it has zoning parameters associated with it, as long as those zoning parameters don't change. And in my opinion, that also includes the, the facade, the floor plan and things like that. Minor details are up to the, quite frankly, up to the owner. And, um, I just think that I'm concerned that there's no, uh, I guess unanimity in the part of the HPC on how this should proceed. And that, that puts an undue burden on the owner. Any other comments from the board? Okay. And Elizabeth, I'm not trying to minimize the, the, uh, the work of the HP, HPC. I think it's valuable to the zoning board and the community. But in this case, there seems to be a, a lot of division and, and it just creates an awkward situation for the applicant.
No, you, you, you're correct. I mean, I think that it's a, it's a, it was a, it was a hard application for them because they supported it for the majority of it, but they were obviously looking for something a little bit more. That's all.
Elizabeth, Elizabeth, I don't, I don't want you to misunderstand me either because you know, we, we believe in your recommendations to us thoroughly. And you know, when you send a recommendation to us, we, you know, we usually go along with that. And in this case, I read your memo and I, it seemed to me like you were recommending that we approve this and that's the way I read it and you know, I don't see any reason why we should approve this and it should go back and people don't agree with each other. Hammer out something and this looks like a perfectly good design. Seems like a perfectly good design.
Right. And, and that's what the HPC was saying, that they do recommend, um, supporting the variances. Um, but as, as I see from the memo and I think from the discussion at the meeting, it wasn't as, it wasn't detailed where they said, we'd like to review it administratively or we'd like to, to appoint a subcommittee. So tho- those are all open ended things which can be problematic.
Yes.
Understood.
Okay. All right. Um, board members, does someone want, well, first of all, are there any other comments? And if there are none, if someone would like to make a, uh, recommendation?
I'll move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion of the motion? Any further discussion, I should say?
Well, I do, I would like to know, do they have to get out, go back to the HPC or not?
Can, can we vote on this and deal with that later?
No, 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 act, actually, no. Stephen's question is a good one because that is a recommendation from HPC and the recommendation is that you're a condition of approval because otherwise I, I don't know on what basis the applicant can be required to go back to HPC. Because now it comes to the zoning board. HPC is advisory to the zoning board. The zoning board, um, is allowed if they deem it appropriate to not accept HPC recommendations. As long as they explain in the record, you know, why are they doing that? Why are they not accepting all the recommendations of HPC? So if this is not a condition of your approval, then I don't know on what basis the applicant could be required to come back to HPC. Because normally the process ends with this board. Unless conditions are attached to the approval, which indicate, I think the last one we just heard this evening was okay, the applicant said, yeah, we will work administratively with Ms. Kim. We don't have a problem with that. And that they thought they had already addressed everything, but they were willing to sit down with her again and go over the items they specified. That's not the same thing tonight, what we're hearing. And what I understand HPC to be asking is that it come back to the full HPC board. So they can go over, um, you know, the design concerns that they may still have. So I think you do have to look at it tonight. We do, the board does have to decide. Are they making that a condition of their approval tonight?
But if you make it a condition, there is no condition that the HPC and the applicant reach resolution on something unrelated to us. On that, yeah, if, unless you're, we're gonna say, yes, you gotta go back and yes, you have to get resolution. And if you don't get resolution, your legitimate zoning approvals aren't any good anymore?
Well, that's, that's the.
I wouldn't say that. I would not say that.
I would not say that either. And that's why I raised the question earlier. What happens? So we say, okay, fine. As a condition of approval, go back to HPC. See if you can work it out. They can't work it out. Now what? What happens? HPC says, well, we, we don't like it. We still don't like it.
What about if, what about if our condition is that they, that we approve it? And we, and, and as a friendly gesture, the applicant can go back and talk to the board. But if they can't agree on anything, then the applicant can do what he submitted to us.
I, I, I don't agree with the wording, Stephen, but I agree with what, exactly what you're saying. I mean, the applicant seems to be sensitive to the design, to the house, to the community and, and if they'd like to talk to the HPC any further to try to come to some resolution to make the HPC comfortable, that's between them and the HPC. I don't think that should be part of our approval. Michael's right. This is a zoning issue, not a, in a sense, a detailed design issue.
Um, and, and I just want to make it clear, I don't believe that HPC felt that, uh, the applicant should come back to the full commission. I believe that they felt that it should be administratively or subcommittee. Although, as I said, they didn't specify that at the meeting, but that's typically the way that they handle it.
So they can go back and have, they can go back and get some advice if they'd like to have it. They don't have to take it if they don't want.
Yeah, but I don't think that should be part of our approval. Okay.
All right. So, so then it's not part of the approval and it's not a condition and.
Well, let's see, Karen, let's see, you know, if somebody needs to make a motion and then we'll, we'll.
You just had, well, you had a motion. That's why.
Okay, I'm sorry. That's right. We did have a motion.
A motion and a second. So I was trying to clarify, all right. Does that motion include anything about HPC or, um, what I hear? The, the consensus of the board is, uh, there is an unwillingness to make that a condition of approval so that essentially it's voluntary on the part of the applicant if they would like to work administratively with Ms. Kim. And I guess if they would prefer not to, then, and, then they don't need to because basically the, the buck stops with you. And that's why HPC is advisory to this board. And once they've got their zoning approvals, well, then they're done. They're finished with the process. So in the last application, the, we actually went over those administrative items that the applicant was going to work with Elizabeth on. In this case, we don't have that because the board was divided on design questions. So they weren't in a position to, um, identify. I, I mean, other than the two items that we heard the architect speak to tonight about the return and the shutters. Um, the applicant said, fine, we'll reduce the size of the return. We'll remove the shutters. And I think the concern was that when, uh, the, it appeared that HPC might go into other areas because these were all concerns raised. And my, my issue was simply, where does it go? Goes to HPC says, well, we just, we still don't like it. And let's say majority of HPC says, well, now that we've had a chance to go over even more. We don't like it. We don't like what you're proposing. Well.
I think we're past that point.
Okay. Well, that's, that's what I'm trying to clarify. So the motion which has been made and seconded is not going to include any, um, requirement that the applicant return to HPC administratively or subcommittee. And is that, is that correct?
It's, it's not our responsibility. It's.
Well, it's not your responsibility, but it's simply because HPC is advisory to this board. So this board has the final say.
So, ca- can I just make a comment? I mean, HPC clearly liked this design better than what was there. I think that that was, I think that that, there was no question about that. Um, and I believe the applicant at the meeting had said that they were willing to work with certain things which they feel were the, the components, which was the returns and, uh, the shutters. So I mean, if that's something that your board feels that that would be something that they would defer those items to HPC um, administratively or whatever, then we would appreciate that at least.
I think it's either or. And I, I think, I think we approve it and if they want to go back, they can do that, but they don't have to.
I, I would agree with that. Bernice, Eve, do you, you okay with that?
Yeah, I, I, I think they've acknowledged that they'll address those, those things, but as, as far as requiring, uh, a, a, a complete resolution and a return, I, I don't, I, I don't support that.
All right. And do you want in the resolution, you want it to be a condition of approval that they will reduce the size of the returns and remove the shutters or not? I see Stephen shaking his head. Everybody shaking their head. Okay. All right. Then the motion, we have a, a motion to approve in a second, and that motion does not include any conditions requiring the applicant to return to HPC or make, you know, further changes to, to the design.
Okay, Eve, Bernice, you're comfortable with the motion you made and seconded? Okay. All right. Um, so are there any other comments from the board or should we now take a vote? Okay, Claudia, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Ten? Yes. Ms. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
German Cohen?
Yes.
You skipped me.
I'm sorry, Mr. Schreiber.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you all. Elizabeth, thank you. And, and I appreciate your effort on this.
Thank you. And, and thank you so much for your attention and for your thoughtfulness on, on our request. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
All right.
All right. Well, um, I believe that concludes our hearings to this evening. So, um, we'll adjourn, have a good holiday season and see you all on the twenty-fifth of January.
You too. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Thank you, Steve. See you all.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Bye.